Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Pennsylvania County Planning Commission, August the 2nd, 2022. Roll call, please.
Ms. Henderson?
Present.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Mr. Horn?
Present.
Ms. Meese?
Present.
Mr. Dalton?
Here.
Mr. Oaks?
Present.
Mr. Harker?
Present.
Mr. Haymore?
Present.
Ladies and gentlemen, would you stand with me in a moment of silence and pledge allegiance to the flag? And gentlemen, if you'd move your cap? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, which is safe, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, endless. May be seated. Hearing the citizens, does any citizen here tonight have anything that you'd like to bring before the commission that is not on the agenda? All right. Approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Dalton.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Waters. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? I guess we do need to vote, I'm sorry. That's for old school, wasn't it? The record show eight yes and zero no. Approval of the minutes. I hear a motion to approve the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion by Ms. Meese, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Horn. Ready for a vote? Let the record show eight yes, zero no. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to Article 5, Division 7 of the Pennsylvania County Zoning Ordinance, we, the Planning Commission, have been empowered to hear and decide specific applications in support of said ordinance and make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors or the Board of Zoning Appeals. In accomplishing this important task, we are charged with promoting the health, safety, general welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. We must ensure that all decisions and recommendations be directed to these goals and that each be in the best interest of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, and its prosperity. Anyone here to speak to the Board regarding zoning cases will be limited to three minutes. At 7:04, case R-2226 is open for public hearing. Ms. Rexdale?
Case R-22026, Charles Thomas has petitioned to rezone 13.4 acres located on State Road 722, Oakwood Drive, in the Tunstall Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow for a Class B home occupation. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Charles Thomas is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Thomas, do you have anything that you'd like to give to the commission that's not in the agenda? All right, now what's her name? Joyce Thomas? Come around, Ms. Thomas. Good evening, welcome. Yes, ma'am. Go right ahead.
Okay. Hello, everybody. My name is Jordan Thomas, and of course, I grew up most of my life on Oakwood Drive. I'm pretty much here requesting for our property rezoned and to be reversed back to its original A1 status as it once was before, so that I'm looking to start working on my plans for fine wines and liquors as a dog board and training facility that I've had the dream of having for a long time. With many programs, organizations, sponsors, and a dedication and passion I thrive for with it to become something great for the dog community here, and plus the surrounding areas for many more to come, including shelters and many things. I was made aware that this case has caused many confusions and concerns for some of the residents on Oakwood after being notified by Pat Collins that everyone has been calling and complaining of it. On July 25th, I made my rounds to talk to everyone who may have had anything they wanted to ask me in clear minds of what I had going on. After hearing what had went on, to speak to someone on the property of mine and see what was going on, I confronted her at her home to let everyone know of what I was doing. The main confusion was because the sign was on top of the road that everyone thought or assumed that the kennel was going right there on the road front, which it never intended to go there. She then told me a lot of people, of course, was going to have complaints about noise ordinance, dogs barking, et cetera, which, go ahead, and I reassured her and corrected any problems someone may have had, things as such as that. I had everything taken care of, and she even proceeded to man, to demand my expenses, assets, loans, contracts, but I did not, therefore, because I was told I did not have to, but I did try to explain my best intentions for the facility and how it was to not bother anybody. I tried to answer all the questions in my best ability, but I did not proceed to come back with the contracts or layouts that she was asking, so after that, we discussed those matters. I have heard of a petition going against me, and I just want to make a better understanding for everybody on the road that may have concerns about this. The layout that they have is not mine, and the different positions that they think it is going is not correct. I'm here to make that established. So, everything that's going is going behind the property of a shop and building that we have. So, anybody that's actually adjacent to me in this property could not clearly actually see this property unless they were trespassing my premises to it, other than privacy fences and matting and rubbers, and of course, certain specialty concrete that's going to go in there to make all this noise go down as much as actually not at all because they're going to be training dogs. Boarding these dogs, each dog will have a kennel-like room. My vision is to start with 10 kennels. I did not plan to go over that in the area that I'm at, with five on one side, another five running on the other for separate sizes and comfortable space. Again, the kennel will be a built-like room with bed, food, and water bowl holders, and an intercom in the top of certain things, such as soothing enrichments when we have storms, fireworks, and other things in that nature, to not work up the dogs. Then they will have a doggy door that does give them access to an outdoor kennel when they are wanting to stretch, get fresh air or sense to access their outdoor kennels. It will be closed off at 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM for noise ordinance protocols. We will also have additional play yard section off into sizes for the dogs to get their full run and training and playtime like any dog needs. Again, no play yards will be in sight to any adjacent properties. These dogs I will be holding are training dogs that are with me for two, four, or six weeks at a time. There will be no daily pickups or visits causing traffic to increase like they are also worried about. The facility will not be open to the public but by appointments scheduled for us only that I make with these clients that I have. No increase, again, traffic should happen. There will also be a daily trash disposal and systematic cleaning procedure for kennels, daily, weekly, biweekly, and monthly for the certain areas and protocols that I have to take that I know by codes. Once fully up and running, I will also have a sonic bark alarm for the perimeter that will be installed to ensure there is no excessive barking, again, or any at all, in the appropriate times that may cause a disturbance to my community. I have researched many reviews, and the system I will be having will keep noise down a little to no sounds at all, especially during the night. Again, they are training dogs, that's what they're here for. The road is full of dogs who sound off at night, but the kennel will not be the issue. If anyone is also worried about escape plans, feed collars will be placed on all dogs when arriving to ensure immediate retrieval if a dog were to escape, but with the layout that I do have, we also have prepared any escape dig or jumping artists that we may get on our hands. These will just be a backup reinsurance for all of the community and our clients. Also, when I'm meeting new clients, no one has to worry for. I will have contracts, agreements to go over, and protocols, and proof and record of all vaccinations for dogs that I'm needing upon arrival. I don't want to take up any more time, but I just don't want confusion, for I'm not here to bother anyone in the community, for I'm here to help. For my community and my road is also full of dogs, and I would love to help them to the best of my ability. If there is any questions that they would like for me to answer, I'm well-known to do it before they had signed the petition, that was known. And a few of them, of course, it would be hearsay, but only said that they didn't know the full understand it, and that's why I'm trying to give it detailed as I can.
Anyone have any question?
Yeah, I got one. Is your main kennel going to be totally enclosed?
Yes, with privacy fences around the perimeter that the kennel will be built. Yes, sir.
Okay. When you say training dogs, are you going to be training like for service dogs or just obedience-type school or?
These will be settled dogs into basic obedience, yes, sir, and puppy stars, so of course, puppies, potty training, leash walking, certain things. If it goes into aggression or behavior modifications, they will not be at that facility, for I also intern and graduated through Wolf and Good Time, Cheryl Carr that's here today. Those types of dogs will go through that facility instead of mine, so all those protocols are safety as well.
Thank you. What's your experience with this type of operation? Have you had a kennel prior to this, or what's your experience?
My experience, well, I've had dogs since I was a little girl, although that doesn't matter. I've been around them for many, many years. I pretty much started actually working in many fields or trying to volunteer in shelters and whatnot. When I was 14, 15, I worked in shelters, vet clinics, a part of rescues, organizations, vendors, events. I'm also now in school to be a dog groomer. They cannot be here today because he was out of town, but I work for Bones and Bubbles, Brandon Rutledge, in Danville, Virginia as well. He's also partnering with me to go with my kennels. And then, of course, for my schooling with Wolf and Good Time, I have been with her for the last three to four years now, working in the kennel fields and knowing, of course, the safety protocols. I also used to be a part of Dancin' Creek Farms where we had to handle and take care of over 80 dogs at a time that are boarding there. She's actually not even 10 miles from the radius from me in the same area. Now, I've had a lot of experience since I was little now, since I was about 18 and now, being almost 26 years old in the working field, daycare centers and such, I've had plenty of experience. And I'm also, I did not bring them with me today, but I do have over at least 18 certificates where I'm classified as dog trainer in many more fields in that area.
Okay, thank you very much.
Oh, Ms. Jimmy.
Go ahead, Ms. Thomas, please.
You were reading so fast. You're a great reader.
Try not to take forever.
Hard for me to comprehend everything you were saying, but I think from the picture that was passed away, passed around, that you do, you are sort of secluded. I don't think that's probably what the neighbors are worried about, is the site as much as that odor and noise. Would you explain again?
Now, the picture-
How are you going to control that?
Yes. Now, the pictures you do have, I'm not sure. Like I said, I'll be honest with you. I had a few people, like I said, or maybe had mentioned, where I had a few intimidation tactics be set against me into pursuing what I'm trying to pursue in things that I'm not trying to go against the community or be some vendetta in this in past experience or problems, which were never with me. Now, I don't know what the pictures they did of the picture of the property, and like I said, I'm new to this, so I didn't know if I was supposed to turn these in, but when I was showing the pictures or I had the actual layout of where we broke out into each property and where my kennel was actually supposed to be, even with the beginning of the building, the privacy fences, no, even the ones that are in front of me, any property adjacent or down the road could not see it. If anything, you'd probably see about as long as this table right here, a front fence, and that's going to be regardless what anybody sees unless you are personally trespassing my property.
Okay. So, would you explain about the noise and the cleaning, keeping the odor down?
Now, of course, you have canine supplies that are safety protocols for them and the cleaning supplies that I do use, but of course, you have weekly, like I said, weekly, biweekly, monthly. Of course, that goes from sanitation, the yards, up to code for parvoviruses, bacteria, and of course, the smell. Daily pickup from morning, evening, and afternoon will, of course, be handled within the yards, and any odor neutralizers, we would have plenty of those from the outside in. We do know that we don't, you don't want a urine smell or fecal smell to get up in the matters anyway, because that can cause into ammonia and other things. So, we usually handle that on a daily wipe-down, kennel washout. Of course, they're going to be on another opposite side where the dogs are not interfering with the cleaning, but even in the facility that we are working at privately, we never have a complaint, and we do Wizy Wash monthly. I don't know if anybody's up to that, but of course, they're like chlorine tablets that disinfect everything, and then you have your usual daily wipe-down, kennel wipe-down, spray out on the back. I mean, we keep that. And daily disposal of the trash or fecal matters and such like that, like I said, we have a systematic system, or it will be taken off daily from the premises. Now, with the noise area, of course, technology is advancing every day. They do have what is called a sonic bark perimeter stance, and those are systems that you set in a certain perimeter, which will be the perimeter of the kennel. Let's say if you do have a certain noise that sparks off the dogs and they start barking, it's actually a high-frequency level that comes on and actually triggers them to silence. It's very, very effective, but like I said, the dogs that are coming in, they're there the two to four to six weeks prior to time. This isn't some daily dogs interchanging in and out like boarding facility, so they are trained to not do that, but that thing is the one that's supposed to stop the barking when it does start. I've used those many times, and it's very, very good for what it's supposed to do. And then, of course, specialty walls, specialty concrete, and then with the privacy fence and the back borders that will have is supposed to take down the sound to not a barrier to be built, basically, for the neighbors not even to hear them. And they're already being built behind an actual like shop or storage building, per se, so there's already kind of a semi-barrier that I can just bring off of that, and it's kind of almost a double barrier.
Well, the first thing you said, and I was really impressed, that you contacted the neighbors to ask for any questions that they might have. I think that's the key here. Anytime you come in the neighborhood with something new, we all, we fear of the unknown. So, I think a good relationship between you and your neighbors is very important, and I admire you for having a vision for your dreams to come true. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Ms. Thomas, what is the maximum number that you think you'd be that one time?
Well, the maximum is going to be 10 kennels tops, so if anything, that's going to be 10 dogs at a time, but I'll be honest with you, likely that they're probably never going to be full, unless maybe you did have one, maybe I did have a prior training dog that maybe need to come back for a few weeks of boarding or for a lineup, then they might squeeze in with my training dogs. But right now, I usually do at the, at a time, maybe go up to four to five at a time, but the 10 is just to be sure of safety protocols, and if anything were to happen, or if I need to go up to that in a certain amount of time, then I do have the space, but I do not, I'm not planning to look over that in the property area that I'm in right now, starting it. If any expansions were to happen, it would not be on this property.
Now, Ms. Thomas, do you live on, on the property?
My parents do at the moment, and then while I have the building facilities, I plan to come back in that area. It's going to have 24, 24/7 surveillance as well.
Okay. From the, the map that we were given with the petition?
Mm-hmm.
It appears from this map that the area of the proposed site is surrounded by mature trees. Is that correct or no?
Yes. My, the, my father's whole property line is basically surrounded by trees, except for maybe one little lot area, but then where I am starting in that, it's actually a back cul-de-sac, and then we are working it through the tree lines. The tree line will be fixed on some things that I take out, but then like I had shown on one that I guess I should have gave y'all before it started, that it shows that I'm keeping also some wood line for, again, the noise reduction or shade protocols for safety, and then you, it's still not clearing any wood lines to where they'll see the whole facility or even a play yard.
The entrance?
Yes.
I understand it's a shared easement there. Can you explain that a little bit?
Now, with that property line, my father does run the property line all the way to that road that keeps going. The one that lives behind him that uses that road is Philip Brown. Now, that is a right-of-way that he uses, but I would not be, and I don't know where that was, again, where somebody had quoted that I was taking away the right-of-way, I was not, but I'm not even using that right-of-way for them to come into my area.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone have any, just a minute. Ms. Thomas, you can have a seat. You will be allowed to come back after the, there's some people that's signed up to, to speak, okay?
Thank you.
Patricia Collins. Speakers now will be limited to three minutes. Welcome, Ms. Collins.
I'm the one, because I got the petition up and had it signed, I spoke to Jordan. The only time we, that I know, that we found out about the boarding kennel was when neighbors called.
Move over a little closer to the mic.
Was when the neighbors called me and was asking about it and complaining, worried about it. So, I went up, down to the property to speak to them, and nobody come to the door, so I went up and talked to her grandmother, and then Jordan come by. And so, anyway, I was asking her about her financing, how's she going to finance, and she was telling me it's going to be about an $80,000 project, and I'm like, how are you going to build a kennel the right way with just $80,000? And she said, she's going to shove two buildings together or something. But anyway, my concern isn't just the property, them being able to finance it or whatever, but, you know, we're going, that's their business. But the biggest thing is, I went around, I talked to everybody, I got the signatures on everybody on the road, except save about a handful that I just didn't get to, and some says, we'll think about it, and then I never could get back to them. Then I showed you, I sent a picture of the map of everybody that is where the easement road is, and everybody that lives around this thing is going to be impacted. Where they said noise reduction and all this, they are going to have this thing open from 6 to 10, so that's going to be a noise, a noise factor, if it's going to be outside, inside. Then I gave you another form pass around about compatibility survey, and it does affect the homeowner's real estate property value, and I was checking on the real estate, and it said up to 12%, that it can impact, and it could fix it so, nobody want to buy your home if it's on your road. So, then you've got the noise of a kennel, and it, dogs barking exceeds 100 decibel, and then if you put it into context, want to know what it sound like, it's like 95 decibel on a motorcycle, the noise off that, and a chainsaw's 110, so you put that in between that, and that's your noise decibel. I know, I worked in a kennel before. I worked at the Humane Society, and I also worked down at Castle County, so I know what goes into a kennel, and I know how noisy one can be. Even though she says she's got the little bark stuff to keep them from barking or whatever, that's fine, but there is going to be some. And the, if you look on, you'll see what the acceptable residential areas with no more than 55 during the night and no more than 65 decibels during the day. So, a dog kennel is going to exceed that. Then you've got-
Ms. Collins, you need to wrap it up, please, ma'am.
Okay. Well, then you go down and look at the reduced value of the homes, and then sometimes you just can't sell property with a kennel. And then you go look at what, how many feet away from a property that you should have a kennel, and it's doubled for what it is, and none of it meets the decibel on it. You go 100 decibels to a 50-foot, and then you got to go 81 decibels outside a home that's 400 feet away, and 74 decibels to at 1,000 feet away. And a daytime is 65, and a nighttime is 55, so you do the math. They need to put the place somewhere else. They don't need to put it on our road. We don't want, if we allow a business to come in there and operate-
Ms. Collins-
-rezone for that purpose, we could have a door open for other businesses wanting to come in, and we want to keep our road residential.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
None to join them? Welcome, Ms. Joiner.
My only problem is, we, I moved out there because I wanted to live in the country, and I wanted, you know, nice and quiet and peaceful. My, I'm, for anybody getting a job or starting a business, but I do worry about the noise and the smell, because my home is right here, there's a home right here, and then it's going to be the dog kennel. So, it's just going to be two in between us, and that, that's the only thing I'm worried about. I mean, her starting a business, you know, hey, more palatable, but it's just where she's putting it, in a neighborhood, you know, that's my problem.
Thank you, ma'am. Jordan Thomas? Denise Thomas? Good evening, Ms. Thomas. Welcome.
Well, I'm Denise Thomas. I'm Jordan's-
Get a little closer to the mic, please, ma'am.
I am Jordan's mother, and she's had this idea for fine wines and liquors ever since she was a child. I mean, literally, this is not a fly-by-night idea for her. This has been a dream since childhood, and she started rescuing dogs when she was probably 13 years old, and I know this because we still have a few of them living in our house with us. The idea has always been at the forefront of her mind for many years, and it's taken until now for us to be able to put the dreams to work and start the process. For the last six or seven years, she has worked two to three jobs consistently, all of them centered around animal care. around animal care, mostly dogs, from grooming, care, training, boarding. And she was fortunate enough when she started working at Wolf and Good Times to be mentored by Ms. Cheryl Carr, also the owner. And while working there, she was offered a chance to go to school and obtain as much knowledge as possible to become the trainer that she wanted to be. And I've watched her come really far in this with Cheryl's mentoring. She is now certified trainer that Cheryl has turned loose on her own to teach and direct classes for her while she still is taking her schoolwork. She's, she's also cruelty free when she's doing her training. She doesn't believe or doesn't like e-collar, shock collars, choke chains. So she trains and teaches the humans to use positive reinforcement when she's training them because some dogs are so fearful with the negative reinforcement. And she has also been afforded the opportunity through Wolf and Good Times to attend many training seminars with some highly respected trainers throughout the country. And I can't imagine anybody wanting to let this talent of hers go to waste. If you've never seen her in action, you'll never know. And I, I wouldn't think that anyone would want to shut her down before she even gets a chance to prove herself to them. This started as a simple request to have our property rezoned back to A1. Because when we purchased this property, it was A1 and we had to have it rezoned to be able to put a home on it. So it was once A1. But once the sign went up, there was extreme resistance for some on the road. And I know that Ms. Collins talked about everybody on the road signed it. Well, we know that's not true because we had people calling us to tell us they didn't sign it. And they told her they weren't going to sign it.
Ms. Thomas, you need to wrap it up, please ma'am.
And I'd also like to add that the property, the property behind us, all the way across our property on the back side is owned by Philip Brown. It is also zoned A1. And then the property that adjoins Philip Brown's is owned by Mr. Barney Jordan, which is also zoned A1. So I can't see any reason why our own property shouldn't be zoned A1 to start this girl's dreams. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Cheryl Carr. Welcome, Ms. Carr.
Hi, everybody. My name is Cheryl Carr. I am the owner of Wolf and Good Time. I am a 30 years experienced master dog trainer. Um, I am here to support Jordan and her dreams. She has spent the last two and a half, three years with me at my facility. She wasn't even allowed to touch a leash for almost the first year. She has gone above and beyond out of any of my interns that I have ever had to start a dream of hers. I have turned her loose. She still works for Wolf and Good Time, um, but I've turned her loose to be able to start her own business and create her own dreams, just as I did. My biggest highlight in my life is when I did the President's Air Force One Security Team Dogs and got to fly to France. I personally have up to 25 dogs at my facility. I have no noise, no noise at all whatsoever because dogs that are in training are not allowed to be barking and causing disturbances. No dogs are allowed to, uh, I've never had an escape. I've never had a dog jump a fence. I've never had any issues with any of my neighbors. I've never had to come to a zoning thing either to start a business, I mean, to have a business somewhere. So this is new to me. But with Jordan and her dreams, I've been out there to her parents' home and where she's going to be putting it. And there's nobody around. And for, I don't know where the neighbors live, but dogs that come for training, they are taught to relax and go into a quiet state of mind. These are helping people in their community to help build a relationship with dogs. No dogs outrunning loose. You get dogs that escape while they come in for training to stop that behavior. Jordan also will not be handling any dogs that have any type of behavior modification or that have any type of aggression. She's not experienced to handle those dogs. She'll be doing basic obedience and eventually I'll be helping her get her AKC, K-9 Good Citizen certification to become an evaluator as I am. I'm going to support her and create as many dreams as I can for her. Because in my internship program, it's a two-year program, it's quite a bit of money. And to spend your money and your time on all your dreams for someone to complain, that, that puts a little damper in your, your lifestyle. This is her dream and I would like to support her in it. And I believe, um, this would really help a lot of the people in the community. When I drive down that neighborhood, I see a lot of dogs out on chains, a lot of dogs barking, running loose. Go through your community and offer to help those dogs to come off that chain so they can live a healthy lifestyle with their owners. Does anyone?
Thank you ma'am.
That's all I need to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mandy Crowler.
Hello. My name is Mandy Crowder and I'm here to support the Thomas family and their rezoning case. Jordan provides a valuable service to the community, specifically to individuals and families who own dogs. Jordan trains dogs to be more confident and obedient. Jordan has trained our 90-pound Doberman to be more confident, respect boundaries, and obey commands that keep her safe and less anxious. The obey, the obedience training that Jordan has taught our dog could potentially prevent her from running away or from a bite situation. For these reasons, I feel that Jordan's services are an asset to the community. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Mr. Crowler. Welcome, Ashley. I couldn't, I couldn't make it out. I'm sorry.
It's okay. It's been a long day. I came right today. Um, I'm Ashley Crowder. I'm here to support Ms. Thomas as well. Um, I'm here speaking as an animal patrol officer. I'm currently employed as an animal patrol officer. So we do deal with a lot of the noise complaints and stuff like that. With my experience, um, normally in kennel facilities, they do have equipment that prevents the sound from escaping. Um, with Jordan, what she's doing is a great service, especially with me as an employee. She's training dogs to be more competent in themselves, um, which not only helps the dog to relax, be calm with people, but it helps keeps the owner safe and it helps keep me doing my job safe as well. I think what she's doing is awesome and, um, she should definitely keep doing it. But that's all.
Thank you. Tammy Jordan. Good evening, Ms. Jordan. Welcome.
Uh, yes, sir. Um, we all concerned about the noise and the smell. And, um, whether they're going to have it at, we have a pool. So I mean, we can't relax at a pool or enjoy a pool because we're going to be smelling, um.
Ma'am, get a little closer to the mic, please. Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. Um, for the smell, uh, that's going to be coming from there. We recently had something about pigs in the back, but, um, he had to remove the pigs because of the smell. Um, and then the ladies, uh, the people that has been coming up here talking to y'all, they don't even live on the road. Uh, so they don't know, I don't know why they're getting up here and saying anything. Cause they don't even live on the road. So how do they know what everybody else on the road is talking about, about the dogs? And, um, then we have, uh, kids running around and all the dogs, some people have their dogs on leashes, but most of them run free up there because we are in the country. And you know, they don't bother nobody. They run free. Okay. And, and we live at a dead-end road. Uh, and it's going to bring a lot of traffic in and out, uh, on the road. And, um, okay. And, and on the front. Um, when, when they are going, like, like, like this, when the dogs is going in heat, okay, all the dogs is running around in the neighborhood, where are they going to run to if they, if a dog's in heat? You know what's going to happen. They're going to be fighting and they're going to be everywhere to wait on that situation. Um, and the value of our properties, um, we all planning on moving when something happens to my husband's mother. It's going to drop the value very much on the property. Uh, because I mean, who would want to live beside of a kennel that has dogs running everywhere? And she said they're going to be fenced in. Well, if you're going to be, if they're going to be fenced in, they need to be fenced in on something like this instead of just a chain link fence that you still going to hear the dogs barking. You still going, especially when dogs is in heat, they go crazy. Um, and we've had, um, everybody talking about, I, I'm proud of her. I'm very proud of her. She wants to do something like that. But there's plenty of land everywhere that, you know, they could open up something like that. Uh, but for a dead-end road and all the traffic coming in and out, where's everybody going to park? Uh, you know, it, it, it's just.
Jordan, you need to wrap it up, please ma'am.
Okay. Um, and just like I say, um, I don't, I, I just don't understand why it would be in that area. You know, because it, it's going to cause a lot of trouble, I think.
Thank you ma'am.
Thank you.
Bernie Jordan. Good evening, Bernie.
How you doing, sir? First of all, y'all please excuse my speech. We, I'm very nervous. I got diagnosed long COVID, causes me speech problems when I almost have a panic attack. Loud noises really mess me up. Uh, and I'm just worried about the noise because we talking less than 100, 150 feet from my, uh, from the back of my house. And I'm worried about the smell. There's no water or septic down there for any of this. I'm very impressed with Jordan's speech. I'm very impressed with it. But I, I, I just think it's going to be problems. You know, Phillip's in the hospital. He can't be here to have his say about this. And, uh, Lord, please forgive me. Um, thought I came on what I wanted to say. Um, you know, Phillip can't be here to say something about that. I'm worried about the traffic. There's livestock running around. What if they get out to this livestock, you know? Uh, there's a sheep out running around last night. There's deer constantly walking through the yard. It's, it's going to create a lot, lot of barking and stuff. I used to play the guitar. I, I just can't even deal with the noise no more. And I apologize. I, I'm, this is about to put me in a panic attack here now. You know, and I'm, got a young kid plays out there all the time. You know, what if one of them get loose or something, or two get to fighting? Um, on weeks, on weekends, we have three kids. We have one permanently and he plays out in the yard all the time. And, 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 and I'm, I'm, I'm really worried about the smell, the traffic, you know, and things get. Uh, and, and honestly, sir, I, I can't really remember everything else I wanted to say. So I appreciate, I appreciate y'all listening to me.
Thank you, sir.
I'm going to be having, I'm on disability, you know. And also one thing I did want to add, where Tamara Burton had her dog plays. I was a cable man for 32 years. And the neighbors halfway up the road complained about the dogs, said they wished they never would have left them there and let them do. Uh, it's very noisy up there. And I feel with the wild animals running around, the sheep getting out, you know, it's just, just going to be a noise problem no matter what. Um, but anyway, thank y'all.
Thank you.
And I apologize for my speech today.
Thank you, sir. Jesse Oaks.
Thank you all. My name is Jesse Oaks. I'm in, I'm in support of Jordan Thomas. Uh, I own a property in Blair's, Virginia, at basically corners of Mount Mason and Keeling Drive. It's about six acres. And I do have neighbors surrounding me. The point is that I adopted a dog, roughly a year and a half old from the Humane Society in, in Danville. And she's, uh, let's say hard-headed. She barks a lot, runs after animals into the forest or the woods. Uh, I have rather busy roads around me. So I was rather concerned about her. And when I adopted her, I attested that I would not put her on a lead. It's certainly too much property defense in. And I'm not, you know, I, I'm not going to kennel my dog. So, uh, I, I employed Jordan Thomas to come out and do some corrective behaviors. Granted, Nala's only a year and a half old, but she's certainly learned some bad behavior. And within a few short visits, uh, she certainly curved Nala's excessive barking, uh, taking off without control into the distance. And, uh, just in general, not jumping on guests. They never jump on me. It's just when a stranger arrives on my property out in the country, you know, she's right on him. Uh, Jordan curved that as well. And, uh, I, I, I'm just attesting to her character and abilities. And, um, by the way, I happen to know that there are 13 acres and I'm only six acres. And within an acre and a half of me is my neighbor, my nearest neighbor. And another acre beyond that is the neighbor behind him. I have six guinea hens, which are incredibly loud. And, uh, none of them hear them. Nor Nala, for that matter, anymore. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is anyone we missed? Uh, I think that's all I had on, uh, Ms. Thomas, you come, do you have anything you'd like to add or comment on what's been said?
Yes, I would. And I'm just going to say this with all due respect, from past personal matters with neighbors that I've had, um, I'm glad that everyone is proud of me. But then they wouldn't be proud if they didn't want to, um, acknowledge when I do try to communicate the correct way in a part of my community. Now with this petition and how they say everyone was complaining, I did still walk door to door to speak to people. And they did recognize that some of them actually did, although they are not here, they were not able to. And I know it's probably hearsay, but they did say that most of them were honestly enforced and kind of signed it to get her off of the property on the petition. A lot of people did not care once they actually did initially know, once I talked to them, where my property was going. Um, for the neighbors that are in front of me of adjacent, yes, they have a pool, but even where the pool sits and where my facility would be, no, they will not have it. And the chain link fence is incorrect when I will have a all wooden, um, fence around the perimeter where you will not see a thing. It's going to be about seven, eight foot high. So you probably wouldn't even be able to see the building. And the buildings are not too adjourned buildings. Actually, Ms. Collins was the one that tried to lay out a layout for me, speaking on, uh, two buildings put together when I actually showed her a facility that was almost built into a shop loft barn-like building. Um, I said some personal things upon my layout in my facility. That's no one's business on the road. But I would like to abide by and the worry and the concerns that my people have on the road, um, as problems. But noise ordinance and everything from 20 years of experience somewhere ago, I mean, 20 years ago, somewhere else in a humane or society or shelter, it's a little different from what I'm doing. Um, a lot of, like I said, technology has advanced till then. So my qualities, my tools and what I plan to use, uh, you really wouldn't. And the whole road is full of dogs and a dog community. They roam free. You hear them every night. I probably hear them howl and do a little line with the coyotes at three or four o'clock in the morning. Um, but I have dogs as well already personally in that backyard. And still to this day, we have had not, had no habit like that. Kids can still play and be kids. Life can still be life on that road. And I will not have traffic concerns when it comes to my property. It's going to be as if I go in day in and day out. Cause most of the times my training dogs are picked up and evaluated at their home, then brought to me by me. And then we have all other scheduled appointments. So it's not one person per session. Other than that, you probably won't see five or six extra guests or clients a month on that road. So traffic increase would not exist either. Um, I just wanted to make that clear in that I'm, again, not here for no vendetta or personal past experiences. I'm here to make a dream and where to start on it. And past the 10 kennels, yes, if I do have an expansion, it would not be on that property. But for now, what I have, I would like to pursue my dream and become what I've become. And I will respect my community, if only they do respect me in the time that, when I do make it happen. And that's all.
Does anyone have any questions from Ms. Thomas now?
What's your timeline? What are you looking at as far as starting this?
Starting it, I plan to have it in the beginning of next year when the spring starts coming up. Of course downtime is of course in the wintertime, but that gives me time to plan out the layout correctly. Start doing the building processes slowly but surely, just to make sure everything corrects in today's time and inflation. We, we all don't know where we're going, but I know one day at a time, I'm going where I need to go with my dream. Um, but, uh, probably by next year, starting in the spring, um, and Um, and then within the one to two-year top expansion, I plan to be the full ten kennel set facility with, with programs to come about it. Uh, group sessions or, or class of aggressions or behavior modifications will still take place at Wolf and Good Time in Eden, North Carolina.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I just wanna say, how many do, is anybody here, the supposing, have dogs in the neighborhood? Are there a lot of dogs in the neighborhood?
Every one of them have dogs in the neighborhood. They used to have six and seven at a time, though, as well.
And my second question is, is that the only option you have on your parents' farm or, or land?
To start in-
To put this facility?
To start on in my dream in the aspect, yes, ma'am, because like I said, you have to have twenty-four seven surveillance. Um, and we are in the aspects of where I'm going in my rental right now. Um, we are in the midst of building, um, as well, somewhere else, me and my boyfriend. But with the land that we are trying to conjure together, or however you would do it, um, it's gonna take a while. So starting off small with my parents', parents' property, because you don't wanna see it that way, but one day I do plan on it. And if they, um, actually, the lot that they cleared increased the value of my neighbor's property when they had done that. And actually having the facility on my problem, property and becoming A1 will increase the value of that one as well. But if they do plan to move, they would not have to worry, because I'll pay what they want for the property.
Anyone else?
Well, I don't have a dog, but I don't know many people who don't. In particular, since COVID, I've read an article in the paper, they are more popular than ever.
And it increases during the years.
For that, for the children, and they had enjoyed them so much when they couldn't get out in public.
And there's people like me in this community as to why I wanna do what I wanna do, so people can enjoy that. But we don't have things like over breeding or wrong breeding or excess dogs, you know, and things like that. They're out of control to have habits that these communities are worried about. That's why I am who I am and what I'm gonna do for our community with the dogs. Because it does go up every year, and for dog trainers, its percentages are going up. They're not going down. Especially in-home services that they have surrounding their home itself. And then also, Dane's Creek Farm actually does not have a complaint, or they wouldn't be there with over eighty dogs. I've worked there. I actually worked there for three years as well, when that was quoted earlier.
Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
Thank you.
At seven forty-eight, case R twenty-two zero twenty-six is closed to public hearing. Mr. Oaks.
Mr. Chairman, in case R dash twenty-two dash zero two-six, I make a motion that re, rezone this property from R one to A one agriculture to allow for a boarding and grooming dog facility.
Motion by Mr. Oaks.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harkins. Any discussion?
I, I just wanna say, I think I'm talking more than anybody here, trying to be fair. I don't know how you can deny her when her property joins A1, and I'm thinking that that's what everybody's thinking. I just hope if it's approved by the board, that the neighbors and Ms. Thomas will work together, uh, to make it work.
Anyone else? Okay, we ready for a vote? Let the record show seven yes and one no. In case R twenty-two zero two-six, to rezone thirteen point four acres from R one to A one, recommend to the board of supervisors. Seven forty-nine, case R twenty-two zero twenty-seven is open to public hearing. Ms. Rexdale.
Case R dash two-two dash zero two-seven, Caesar Investment LLC has petitioned to rezone eleven point two-one acres located on State Road seven ninety-two Millstream Drive in the Banister Election District from R one Residential Suburban Subdivision District to R P D Residential Plan Unit Development District to allow for multiple dwellings to be placed on the property. Once the property is rezoned to R P D, all uses listed under section thirty-five dash two-nine-four are permitted. Staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman Yolanda Caesar is here to represent the petition.
Come around, if you have anything that you'd like to add to the, uh, commission that's not on the agenda.
I don't think she's here.
Oh, he's not?
She was supposed to be here, but I don't, now I don't see her.
Okay.
So I can attempt to answer any questions that you all may have.
Any commission have any questions? Ms. Rexdale.
Uh, just your recommendation, Ms. Rexdale, is to deny this. Is it based on anything other than the VDOT study, or is it?
No, um, when Jay Craddock with VDOT went out and looked at the property, um, he said that he did not feel that the site distance would allow for a commercial entrance. Um, however, he did say that if Mrs. Caesar would like to contact him, he could talk to her about additional options. So that information was passed along to her, whether or not she contacted VDOT to discuss those options, I'm not sure. But as it stands right now, when he went to the property and looked at it, um, what she's proposing to do would not meet their requirements.
Okay.
Any further comments? Not it. Seven fifty-one, case R twenty-two zero twenty-seven is closed to public hearing. Ms. Henderson?
Mr. Chairman, in the case of case R twenty-two dash O twenty-seven, um, I do recommend that we do deny this petition based on the findings of VDOT.
A second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Meese. Any discussion? Now we're ready for a vote. Let the record show eight yes, zero no. Case R twenty-two zero two-seven, uh, to rezone eleven point two-one acres is denied. Seven fifty-three, case S twenty-two zero one-one is open for public hearing. Ms. Rexdale.
Case S dash two-two dash zero one-one, New Testament Baptist Church has petitioned for a special use permit on six point five seven acres located on State Road seven forty Iris Lane in the Westover Election District for an after-school program and future preschool. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, representatives from New Ba-, New Testament Baptist Church are here to represent the petition.
You gentlemen have anything that you would like to add that we do not have in the packet? Good. Any questions for this gentleman? If not, seven fifty-three, case S twenty-two zero one-one is closed to public hearing. Ms. Meese.
Mr. Chairman, I make a recommendation that this be approved as requested to the board of supervisors.
Motion by Ms. Meese.
Second.
Second by Mr. Horn. Any further discussion or questions? Not, we ready for a vote? Let the record show eight yes and zero no. Thank you, folks, for doing that. That's a big, uh, something that's needed in that community. I'm very aware of that.
Yes.
Little short distance away, so congratulations. Thank you very much. At seven fifty-four, case S twenty-two zero one-three is open for public hearing. Ms. Rexdale.
Case S dash two-two dash zero one-three, Larry Oaks has petitioned for a special use permit on one hundred and fifty-eight point six-seven acres located on State Road nine sixty-eight Sandy Creek Church Road in the Dan River Election District for the sales service and repair of automobiles. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman Larry Oaks is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Oaks, you have anything that you'd like to add or say that we do not have in the packet? Any questions for Mr. Oaks? If not, at seven fifty-five, case S twenty-two zero one-three is closed to public hearing. Mr. Horn.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I've known Mr. Oaks for many years, and if anybody else knows him, he has operated H and O Motors out on Fifty-Eight East for several years. And Larry's just trying to retire, but he wants the capabilities of being able to still sell that car if he needs to on his property. And if you know him, he does not deal in junk. I've bought several vehicles from him, and he, he only has top-notch vehicles on his lot. So in this case, I recommend to the board of zoning appeals that we grant this special use permit.
Motion by Mr. Horn.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harkins. Any further discussion or questions? Not, we ready for a vote? Let the record show eight yes and zero no. Mr. Oaks, you can continue in your retirement. In case S twenty-two zero one-three, a special use permit on one hundred and fifty-eight point six-seven acres uh, be recommended to the, uh, board of zoning appeals. At seven fifty-six, case S twenty-two zero one-eight is open to public hearing. Ms. Rexdale.
Case S dash two-two dash zero one-eight, Darrell and Deborah Byrd have petitioned for a special use permit on point six-six acres located on Highway fifty-eight Martinsville Highway in the Tunstall Election District for a public garage. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman Deborah Byrd is here to represent the petition.
Ms. Byrd, you have any comments or anything that you'd like to add that not in the packet? Anyone have any questions for Ms. Byrd? If not-
Yeah, I got some.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Oaks. Go right ahead. Come around, Ms. Byrd. Thank you, ma'am. You might wanna lower that mic just a little bit.
Little bit, because I'm short.
Do y'all live in your, the house on the property?
The house we live in, the actual building that we wanna use is right behind the house. We had originally planned to store an RV in it, but did not purchase the RV. And then circumstances with COVID threw us into opening our own garage. So we wanna utilize the building that we built for the RV for an actual garage. We got a grant from the River District, um, to get a lift and finishing closing in the building. And as soon as I get, um, an engineer out there to get it approved to hold the lift that we need and permission from you guys, then we'll be finishing the garage and ready to start it.
Yes, but do y'all live in the house?
Yes, sir. There, there's a, currently a house in front of the building we're discussing.
Yes, ma'am, I saw that.
Yes, sir.
It's, it's two things that concern me. One of them is you got houses going toward Axton next to this. You got a house on the Henry County side. The folks keep it a mack of it. The other thing is the size of the lot is, it's just two-thirds of an acre. I know guys that, that have bought lots this size and tried to operate, um, repair shop. They parking cars on top of cars. They don't have room to turn around. And that concerns me that you don't have enough space.
I understand that. Um, our actual goal is to move our home or put a new home further back. We actually own twenty-six acres right there, but it's, um, two parcels. The front parcel is point six-six acres, which is where we want to actually build a four-bay garage eventually. We just didn't have the money to start that route, um, so we're trying to go a little at a time. Um, and like I said, further back on the property, we wanna actually build a second house and move us out of that area and zone that commercial specifically, um, when we're ready to go up bigger.
Yes, ma'am, that, but the ring concerns me because you already got a row of cars in front. Half the backyard's full of cars. And I'm just wondering if, if there's enough room. And if you was rezoning the property behind it, too, I could understand.
Okay.
But that's, that's my concerns.
Now, I can tell you that five of those vehicles belong to us as our vehicles. I have two teenage daughters and a boy, teenage boy, well, he's not, he's twenty-one, the boyfriend of one of the daughters. So there's three vehicles, and then one for myself and one for my husband. So five of the vehicles that you see out front actually are personal vehicles.
Okay.
I don't know if that helps or not.
A little bit.
Okay.
But it, you know, this, this looks totally out of place for the houses around it. That's, that's what I'm getting at.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else have anything? Thank you, ma'am. An eight oh one, case S twenty-two zero one-eight is closed to public hearing. Mr. Oaks.
Mr. Chairman, in case S dash twenty-two dash zero one-eight, I'm gonna make a motion that we do not change the zoning on this property.
Motion by Ms. Oaks to desire, deny the special use permit on the six point sixty-six acres. A second. Open for another motion. That failed for a second. Right, Mr. Legal, legal?
Motion fails for lack of second, so the floor is open for a different type of, uh, motion.
All right, sir.
Could any, any conditions be applied that would be satisfactory, Mr. Oaks, or no? I haven't seen the area, so I'm not familiar.
It, it's, it's nothing around it pertains to businesses, residential and vacant land. And with, with houses on each side of it. Um, and then you take a two-thirds of acre lot and, and put a, a car repair shop on it. I don't think it fits in, uh, you know, where, where they're looking to do this. That's, that's my opinion. But, uh, you know, I'm, that's just my opinion.
Right.
I have a question for Mr. Ms. Byrd. Do you, this property behind you that's zoned A1 agricultural, do you guys own that property, too? How much is it? Twenty-five acres? Is there any reason that you could not build your garage on the A1 property?
Just a little problem on the road. Uh, the original, original reason-
Ms. Byrd, Ms. Byrd, come around to the microphone. I'm sorry. This is being recorded, so we need-
Sorry. Um, the original reason we purchased the property is our goal had always been to put a garage. Because it's road front, it's right on Fifty-Eight, it makes it very visible. Um, and again, across the way, there is fields at this point. Now, after you pass the church, there is three residential houses, and then there's another business, it's a car sales, um, business further up from us. If heading towards Henry County, um, there's nothing until after you get into Henry County, after the sec, the house is right beside us.
Your, your current residence, you said, is in front of this garage, so what happens when you build your new- when you build your new house?
That's getting ripped down. Like I said, our, our original goal was to build a house further back on the property, on the 25 acres. We just haven't been able to financially do that. We've been doing everything out of pocket. We haven't taken any loans or anything. The grant that we got approved of from the Dream Launch River District is the first money that we will have access to, other than what we paid out of pocket. And like I said, that was originally marked for a lift and to finish closing that building in. The house with the trailer in front of us is a 1973 trailer that we've just been making do in. Like I said, our goal is to have a new house further back on the property.
Ms. Meese?
So what I'm hearing you say is another business, three doors down?
Yes, yes. Past the, you have the church, three residents, and then another business. It's a used car dealership, front row motors. And then after that, you have a couple more residents, and then another church.
So the next thing I want to say is, have you got a feel from the neighbors? Are they in opposition? None of the neighbors are here tonight to oppose it?
He is on the list. It's Mr. Ingram.
Is he for or against?
I don't know. He never told me he didn't want it.
Listen to him.
Wait just a second. I don't have that list. I'm sorry, Mr. Ingram, I didn't, Ms. Byrd, it's not, maybe it is in the back. It is, I guess, yep. I'm sorry.
Okay. Sorry.
Okay. My name is Gary Ingram. I own the jointed properties of Darrell and Deborah Byrd. I've known them for about a couple of years, but I, I've been on this property about 75 years. My mom and dad passed away a few years ago, and it was left to me and my brothers, so we own the property. And me and my brothers keep it up, mow the lawn. It's about 20-some acres. We keep it up, growing pretty good. I don't know if you've seen it before or not, but only, my only concern is when he gets his cars lined up. And I try to mow my grass sometime. I've had to ask him to move his cars, which he did, so, you know, but it's a little annoying. And my concern is, if it's approved, how does a board feel about fencing? Is that what would be required to have a fence? And how much road furniture are we talking about?
Ms. Rexdale, can you answer that?
The staff did recommend conditions that require fencing and screening in accordance with the requirements of the ordinance. So that would be up to the board as to whether or not you all made a motion with that condition.
I have a notation. There was two conditions that would be added to it, and wanted to make sure that Ms. Byrd was aware of that.
I wasn't, but I'm prepared for fencing. I don't know what to do with this.
Did you hear that?
That's all, sir.
All right, sir. Yeah, we can come back up if you'd like. Anybody now have any questions, additional questions for Ms. Ms. Byrd?
Hey, Mr. Chairman, would you make her aware of the?
Yeah, the conditions.
The other condition was that all repairs be conducted in an enclosed structure, so within a building, which you're proposing to do anyways.
Yes, with the grant money, yes.
And the other part of it is that you're limited by the code as to how many inoperable vehicles you can have there.
Okay. How will I find that out?
So they can only remain on the property for 60 days if you're operating as a business. And so inoperable means they're missing any parts that make them working. They don't have valid inspection or tags.
Is that what you needed?
That answered it, for me.
Any more questions from Ms. Byrd, anybody? Thank you, ma'am. All right, the attorney has stated that if you, we are open now for another motion if, if you want to.
Did that, Mr. Oaks, did any of that change your calculus at all?
Well, I, uh, not really. But, you know, I'm, I'm just one vote. You know, if, if y'all want to approve it, you know, that's, that's not my decision. I just don't think it, it fits in that area. And if they went back on that other property and had their business, where they wouldn't have a fence right at the road, I would go along with it. But it's, it's like this gentleman. Here, when you pass that property, it's older brick house, all the buildings, they've always kept it looking so nice and neat and nice. And, and then with the other houses down the road, to have a recall, repair shop right in the middle of it, it takes away from their properties. And so if it was moved back, that, that would make a difference.
So in other words, if the other property they owned was, was also a special use permit considered for that, that that would be more, more suitable than where the current location is?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Would you reintroduce your motion to the floor, Mr. Oaks? Motion of denial.
The same motion?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, on property S. 22-018, I make a motion that we do not issue a special use permit for a garage on this property.
Motion by Mr. Oaks?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Mr. Harkel. Any further discussion? Not ready for a vote. Let the record show five yes and two against, one abstain. So in case S. 22-018, a special use permit on 0.66 acres will be recommended to the Board of Zoning Appeal.
Recommend, deny. Was I recommending?
Denied for the, I'm sorry, denied to the Board of Zoning Appeal. At 8:14, case S. 22-019 is open for public hearing. Ms. Rexdale?
Case S. 22-019, Elkhorn Lake ATV Trails LLC has petitioned for a special use permit on 149.1 acres located on State Road 729, Red Road, in the Bannister Election District for recreational use ATV trails. The staff summary isn't closed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Todd Chamberlain is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Chairman, come around, sir. Good evening and welcome. Fine, sir. Do you have anything you'd like to add that we do not have in the packet?
Uh, this property, the 149 acres, that is owned by Quercus, Mr. Clifford Lewis. It's, uh, right now used for timbering. It has a couple logging roads on that property. We plan on leasing the property as long as we get the special use permit on it for the existing ATV trails that we do have. The property surrounding this property, we own three of those parcels. Two other parcels that join this property are owned by Cloverdale. They're used for timbering, timbering use only. And the last property is owned by, I had his name in here, Mr. Coleman Fuller, who actually lives up in Baltimore. His part of the property that touches this property is ag use. His residential lot is all the way up on Elkhorn Road, so it should not affect him none whatsoever.
Any questions for this gentleman? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At 8:16, case S. 22-019 is closed to public hearing. Ms. Henderson?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, in the case of S. 22-019 for Elkhorn Lake, and before, as before, thank you again for your investment in our community. We appreciate that. I do, would like to make a motion that we do recommend this to the BDA, that we would recommend this special use permit.
Motion by Ms. Henderson?
Would you like to add the conditions staff recommended to that?
Eight of them, is that correct?
Yes, I would.
I think I'm right. Special use could be...
It's the same conditions that have been applied to their other special use permits.
You're familiar with those?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Henderson, you doing that?
Yes, I would, and thank you for that.
Motion by Ms. Henderson?
Second.
Second, Mr. Oaks, who's second?
Oh, Mr. Waters.
Waters, I'm sorry. Second, most, Mr. Waters. Second by Mr. Waters. Any further discussion or questions? Not, we're ready for a vote. Gary, you need to punch it again.
Okay.
Let the record show eight yes and zero no. That case S. 22-019, special use permit on 149.1 acres be recommended to the Board of Zoning Appeals. I have nothing else. Ms. Rexdale, do you have anything?
Um, I, I had, would like to let you all know, there will be a public hearing for the zoning ordinance update on August 18th at 6:00 at the Community Center in Chatham. You all are welcome to attend if you would like to come voice any opinions or concerns about the current ordinance or any things that you would like to see looked at as we move through this process. Additionally, please pass this along to anyone in your district that would like to attend. This is open to the public, and this is a good place to come provide input. Additionally, from yesterday through the beginning of September, there is an online survey for the zoning ordinance update. That can all be found on the county's website, so please, you know, make that known, share that with anyone who you think would, would like to give their input for that as well.
You say, what, what did you say, August what?
It's August 18th.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
At 6:00 PM.
Okay.
Okay, nothing else. Any commissioner have anything?
No. I just wanted to follow up on that, on that case, that last case, not the Elkhorn, but the prior one, Mr. Oaks. Generally, it's my instinct to back the representative of the community that a issue comes up, a case comes up before. And I'm sorry I didn't quickly second your, your motion. I just needed to hear a little more information from, from their perspective, because obviously, we want people to be able to do what, what they want to do and accomplish that. It seems like you had good insight and, and good wisdom picking up on some things that maybe the rest of us weren't privy to, and I just wanted to, well, not really apologize, but explain the delay, I guess, in my voice and my support to your original motion.
Well, I think in, in, especially stuff in, in my area, my district, I go look at it. And this, this piece of property, having a garage on it like that, it, it just totally looked like it didn't belong. The, everything about it looked like it didn't belong.
Well, once again, we're only a recommending body. The Board of Zoning Appeals and the Board of Supervisors has the final say so on either of these.
And, you know, I hate, I hate that they didn't get what they wanted, because I know everybody wants to do what they want to do with their property, and they got their dreams. But certain things just don't fit in certain places. And this, this, in my opinion, was one of them.
Well, thank you for your wisdom, ma'am.
And so, yeah, I appreciate that. And I try to do, do the best I can for the county. And I've lived here all my life, and it's home, and I love this area. Everywhere I go, I always want to come back home.
Thank you, sir and ma'am.